Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We have a couple of things that we want to talk about tonight that we're pretty excited about. As you know, that as the calendar turns to March, not only do we think about basketball, but we also think about budget. And we are beginning the budget season in earnest. And so, Mr. Butler, in just a few moments, is going to just give us a little bit about the timeline of the budget. Certainly with three new board members, I want to give you an opportunity to kind of just, we're not going to, it's not going to be an in-depth study of school finance in South Carolina, but we did want to do some budget basics, I believe is what we called it. And then Ms. Kimberly Freeman is going to talk to you about some changes that we've made in our Teacher Leadership Council, and we're very excited about that. And would also want to remind you of our Pizza and Policy Discussion, which I'm sure is most likely going to be in your presentation. Pizza Policy and Presentation, by the way. And then, finally, this is also the time, as you noted tonight, that we voted on administrative hiring. And I thought it would be a good time, too, to talk about the changes that we've done in our administrative changes, our hiring practices associated with the administration. I'm going to say that right eventually. Our administrative hiring process has had lots of changes over the last couple of years. And so, Mr. Stacy is going to give you an update on what that's going to look like as well. So, Mr. Butler, if you would, please.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Madam Chair, members of the board, just wanted to give a brief update on kind of our process. I know many of you are very familiar with this. Some of the newer members may not be, and for the benefit of our audience, I wanted to go over this. So, the budget process starts at the end of the calendar year in November and December, where principals and department head should be collecting budget input from their stakeholders. Our principal should receive information from parents, staff, and students regarding what they perceive to be the needs of their school. Then in January, principals project what they think their student enrollment will be for the next year, which drives the budget, and prioritize with their administrative staff the needs of their school base on all the input they have received, plus what they believe to be the needs of the school. In February, principals meet one-on-one with Finance and HR to discuss their budget needs. They discuss their personnel needs with HR, and then discuss their enrollment projections with Finance, who separately we have projected enrollment for the schools and will come to a compromise. The principals also present their prioritized needs to Finance. These needs are broken down into two categories. The first being operational needs, such as salary interference, travel, professional development, printing, purchase services, contract requests, dues and fees, all the things that are operational. And then the other is capital needs. Capital funds can only pay for capital items such as buildings, equipment, land, et cetera. Capital cannot pay for operational items. So, I want to make that distinction clear. In March, the district will start receiving revenue projections from the state, as well as assessment figures from the county, which we have just received. This allows the district to start putting a draft together of the possible revenues available. Then the senior leadership team will consider all the schools' requests, as well as the department's requests, and Finance will begin to put together a first draft of the budget. Senior leadership team will then deliberate all requests and align those requests with available revenues, making sure that the proposed requests are in line with the district's strategic plan and major goals. In April, Finance will put together a first reading of the budget and present that draft budget to the board, as the district receives more defined revenues from the state, as we can receive information from the House and possibly the Senate, and updated assessment figures from the county, as well as feedback from the board. Finance will put together a second reading of the budget to be presented in May. By June, we should have a good idea of the total revenues available to the district, and with feedback from the board, the expenditures the district wants to include in the budget. The district will present the third reading of the budget to the board for approval in June. That's kind of the process. Are there any questions?
Mr. Butler, do you have a feel for the tax base in Lexington County? Have you gotten, I know we'll get into the details, but is it going to be a good year or don't know yet?
We've received some preliminary assessments from the county. Basically, right now, they're showing about a 2.9% growth. The problem is, the majority of that growth is in owner-occupied property.
Right.
Which we don't receive operational taxes for.
Okay.
If you look at just what we receive on taxable property, it's more like 1.4%.
And compared to previous years, that's about the standard?
It's a little low, but, you know, it's early.
Right.
So, it's a preliminary assessment. I think that will grow as we get closer through the process. So, and that's kind of been the trend historically, so I think that's true. We did receive projections from the House Ways and Means. They put aside $5.5 million for a 4% raise for teachers. For our district, that actually cost us about $6 million. So, that's about a half million dollars short of what we need to fund that 4%. Also, besides that, just putting that aside, they reduced the base student cost, where we'll actually receive about a half million dollars less next year than what we received this year.
And this may be further in the weeds than we want to get tonight, but at the SC-SBA Convention two weeks ago, I attended the school finance session, and the presenter was talking about how the base student cost this year for, I guess, 18, 19, actually was reduced by $5 per student in January, just because the state just reduced our funding.
Yeah, that's not unusual. A lot of times, they will come in mid-year and cap the base student cost because their projections are based on the statewide estimated weighted pupil units or students. And then they say, oh, well, we don't have enough money to do that, so we're going to put a cap on it, and they'll reduce the base student cost. The base student cost for this year should be about $24.85 per pupil. Next year, they're actually looking at about $24.67, which is a reduction, which less money next year than we had this year.
And historically, when you look at a budget versus actuals, percentage-wise, 98%, 99%, so, I mean, in terms of accuracy, because I know it's very fluid, because there's so many sources of revenue and those kind of things. Just historically, y'all always kind of been within that couple few percentage points?
Yeah, we budget conservatively, because we don't want to over-budget our revenues and then come up short, which some districts have done. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, Charleston got in trouble because they overestimated the revenues by some $9 million, and then overspent their expenditures by about $9 million. So, they had about an $8, $10 million loss to their fund balance. We don't do that. So, we're probably, I don't know the percentage, but we're probably about 97%, 98%, somewhere in that range. Thank you.
Any other questions, Board, from Mr. Butler? Okay, moving on, we'll go to Dr. Little. Turn it back over to you, please.
All right, so Ms. Freeman is going to come and talk to you about our Teacher Leadership Council. We lovingly to refer to it as TLC, and some exciting work has been coming out of this group of leaders. And I don't want to give too much context, because I'm afraid I'll step on, I don't want to steal, I don't want to steal the proverbial thunder.
Thank you, members of the board, Madam Chair, Dr. Little. It's exciting to be with you tonight, share some work that has been going on for a long time, but sort of relaunched and revisioned about a year and a half ago in our district. So, you may know that prior to the '17, '18 school year, we had two groups of teacher leaders that functioned within our system. We had a teacher forum, and then we had a teacher advisory council. And so, both of these groups were comprised largely by teachers of the year, school-level teachers of the year across the district. So, one of the things that we began to understand was that serving as a teacher of the year for your school is a blessing, but it comes with a lot of responsibilities. And so, we began to look at how these two groups functioned kind of alongside of each other. The teacher forum primarily was a group that engaged in district-level, district-wide event planning throughout the year to serve several different purposes towards ultimately celebrating the profession. Our teacher advisory council met in this room typically once a month with the superintendent and members of SLT to relay questions or concerns from the school building to those folks in those leadership positions, and to take some answers back. But it was the same group of people coming together for both of these groups. And so, we began to look at how we could really leverage the phenomenal brain power of the people in the room to do some exciting work. And out of that was born the Teacher Leadership Council. So, we got both of these groups together last year, and we really let the teachers do some visioning around what this might look like by asking them this question. What would it look like if Lexington County School District One was the premier teacher destination for our state and even beyond? What might it be that would draw teachers to do three things with us? We told them very specifically that we were looking to be a place where teachers wanted to be, where they wanted to grow, and where they wanted to stay. And so, we even talked to them, we kind of framed our conversation. Dr. Little shared some vision with them around this idea of Lexington One as a teacher destination. So, we went out with our hashtag #DestinationLexOne and said, what can we do as the teachers in this room to look at how that might come together? So, we went through a process that fall of looking through several different protocols, different brainstorming processes to look at, what are the things that the folks in this room are passionate about? Because we were really honest with them from the beginning. Said, you know, you guys are already the leaders in the classroom, you're already the leaders in your building, and quite honestly, like, we don't want to waste your time when we're here in this space together. And so, if this work is not something that you're passionate about, and not something that you really desire to come and be a part of and engage in, then we want to set you free, because we know that your time and your intelligence and your capacity is valuable in other ways. And so, the exciting thing was that we set everybody free, and 95% of them chose to stay anyway. And so, it was really exciting to see all that work come together. And so, we began a process of really matching the passion of the people in the room to some projects that they could launch throughout the year. So, now, instead of coming into a room where there's a big circle of people who are asking questions, and those questions are being answered in real time in the room, questions are submitted digitally prior to the meeting. And so, teachers are able to share their questions still with Dr. Little and members of SLT, and the answers to those questions are shared back to them electronically. Now, from time to time, a question will come up that warrants some discussion. And so, when that happens, then we take the time to have the conversation in the room. But the things that can be answered via that back-and-forth digital communication, we do, so that when we're together, instead of seeing people sitting in a big room, you're going to go all over campus. We truly, I think, reserve every workable space on campus from these Tuesday afternoon meetings, and we have working groups that meet all over the campus. And so, these groups of teachers, when they come together, are actively engaged in the work of moving our profession forward. And they're doing that aligned to personal passion that they bring to the table. And so, we have several different working groups that have done some really neat things over the past year. We have a professional learning team that revamped our collaborative planning guide. They met with Dr. Tally and members of Instructional Services, and they created a digital collaborative planning guide that was user-friendly for our teachers, and gave them some resources they needed to leverage that time well. They also redesigned our instructional fair based on teacher feedback, including giving teachers some collaborative time back because of the loss of collaborative planning that we had this fall with the weather. And so, they were able to give that back to teachers in that way. They're now partnering with Dr. Smith and the Instructional Services team to look at some new structures for professional learning opportunities and how we push those out to teachers. So, this group is really tackling that. We have a teacher recruitment and support group that worked with our human resources team to redesign the teacher recruitment fair this year. I know many of you were a part of that. And so, they helped lead the work to redesign that day, and then to represent their schools through the tables you saw around the room. They are now working on some strategies specifically for supporting teachers in their second through fifth year of teaching, when we know that we still need the mentoring, but the formal structures aren't in place. So, they're looking at what we can do to do that well. We have a teacher retention and recognition working group that has developed seven potential high-leverage strategies for teacher retention that they see within our system, and they've now divided into subgroups, and they're researching and developing some proposals for moving those forward. So, they're looking at some ways we can tackle retention. We have a teacher leadership team that's working with Ms. Mary Gaskins to look at the consistent roles and responsibilities of teacher leaders across the district as we enroll the leadership continuum within our system, really focusing on teacher leadership within the classroom. So, a lot of times, when we talk about leadership, we talk about moving into different positions. This group is helping us look at what it means to lead from within the classroom and really support teacher leaders with some professional learning supports that will help build their capacity. And then we have a teacher voice team that has met with several different members of the Central Services Team. This is a group that just has the ability to share concerns that they're hearing from their peers, and then to brainstorm some solutions to that collaboratively. So, and then, the last working group we have working right now is our professional advocacy team. And so, these guys implemented some voter registration and voter turnout drives for the June 2018 and November 2018 elections. So, you might have seen the LexOne Votes hashtag on Twitter, on social media. They organized a jeans campaign, where if you had your "I Voted" sticker and shared that on social media, or shared it directly with your administrator, you received a jeans pass that you could wear. So, you know, it's the little-known fact about teachers, like, we'll do a lot for a jeans pass. And so, it was a great, you know, easy way to say, hey, as members of our profession, we've got to step up and advocate. And so, they did that. And this same group is now launching our Pizza and Policy Event, which I will leave you with tonight. We are excited that this Thursday evening, we're going to meet with members of the Lexington County delegation at the Technology Center. From 6:00 to 6:30, we're going to eat pizza, and then we're going to just come around the table together. I just checked, so I checked before I came down the hall, and we had 181 Lexington One educators RSVP'd for the event. It's now 183. So, we're still getting folks who are RSVP-ing, and if you've been in our system when we've tried to do something like this before, getting 183 people to come was completely unheard of. So, you know, we would have forums where if we had 10 teachers in the room, we felt like we really were successful at getting people to come out. So, to have 180-plus teachers and educators from our system who are going to join us on this night is really exciting. Most of the members of the Lexington delegation are going to be with us. And really focusing this night around coalition-building between our teachers and our local delegation, so that we can sit around the table together, we can talk about some of those policy issues that are a part of the conversation statewide, and allow our teachers to share some feedback, and also for our legislators to share some feedback with our teachers, just for that given, an exchange of information. So, we're excited about that night, hope that many of you can join us, and we're looking forward to what that will look like and how we'll celebrate it. So, we're super excited about the work of this Teacher Leadership Council. It's been a lot of fun to see it come together and to see these teachers seeing things through across the finish line that are making a difference for our system and our profession. So, thank you for allowing us to do this work and to press forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before anybody asks a question, I just want to also follow up and say, just as a reminder, these are teacher-driven, so it's not as if we gave them a list of things to do and say, hey, you know, do something along these lines. They've created that, they've worked on it. My only rule was do something you like. If you don't like it, change groups. If you think you like it, and you kind of got halfway into it, and you realized you didn't like it, we gave them complete autonomy to move around, to change. Some people have done that. But what I love is there are real deliverables coming from our teachers specifically designed to make us a better place. And I can't be more thrilled to see how this has come together. And then, all I also promised them, not all I also promised them, but I also promised them, they would have resources, budgets, and support to turn those ideas into reality. So, that was one of the, that was our promise, that they weren't going to come up with ideas, and they were just going to sit on a shelf, but that we would advance those ideas through people, resources, and whatever it takes to make that happen.
Do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Freeman? No, I just would like to say thank you, and can I get the board, let's give them a round of applause, because this is exciting.
Kimberly, can we wear jeans tomorrow night, I mean, Thursday night?
And eat pizza.
Kimberly, would you share with this, just very quickly, about kind of what the framework on Thursday night's going to look like? Can you share that with the board?
Sure. So, we, you know, we kind of came together and said, huh, we have 150 people coming. So, that sort of changes maybe how we would scaffold a conversation for that night. So, we're going to use a World Cafe protocol, and in this protocol, we'll have a legislator or community leader, and the community leader may be a board member, if you're able to come and willing to help us in this way, I'm going to be reaching out, who will be the facilitator of the table, or the leader of the table. And so, what we did, when we asked the teachers to RSVP for the night, one of the questions that we asked them was, what are some things that you would like to make sure, to ensure that we discuss with our policymakers on this evening? And so, four things really rose to the top in what we got back from teachers, and that was teacher pay, and what that might look like, which has obviously been a big part of the conversation this year. Class size came out of that conversation. Assessment, and the way that we are giving assessments, or the number of assessments that are given to students, was a part of that that came out. And then oversight by the state and what that might look like, particularly in light of the Zero to Twenty Committee that's a part of the proposed legislation. And so, we have some questions around those ideas. So, Alicia Clamp, who's our current district teacher of the year, will facilitate that. And so, she'll share a question with the group, and then we'll ask at the table for everybody to share sort of in a round-robin style for about three minutes. So, there'll be eight people at the table, so that'll go pretty quickly. And then there'll be some time for just a little open discussion there at the table with that small group. At the end of that question or round, the leader of the table will move to the next table, so that everybody is talking to at least five different people across the evening as we move through those five different rounds. And so, and then the last question that we're going to ask everybody in the room, whatever your job or responsibility in this world might be, is, you know, to share, here's the most challenging part of the work I do, but here's what makes it worth it. And so, what we want is for all of us to hear that night, particularly from our educators. You know, so often, we've been hearing so much about how hard the work is, and it certainly is. But there's a reason why these, you know, these teachers keep coming back every day and investing in our students, and we want them to be able to share that, too. And so, we'll leave the evening kind of celebrating that.
Y'all knew we weren't just going to do like somebody standing up there talking and 180 people not doing anything. That's not how we do business in Lexington One. We like to engage them, get them moving. All right. So, the last presentation of the evening is Mr. Mike Stacy, and talking about our administrative hiring practices.
Thank you, Dr. Little, and School Board. I'm just going to say this, though, I have like the best staff of anybody in this district. Kimberly Freeman was charged with revamping the Teacher Leadership Council, making it something different, and she has done a phenomenal job with that group of people. And so, I just can't, I can't even praise her enough for the work that she's done. And then the other person that's sitting in here, Devana Price, when I talk about the hiring practices that we've developed, she really has been that person that's helped make this work. So, I'm going to get credit for, by doing this presentation, but really, those two ladies right there have done a tremendous job in HR to make us what we are today. So, I very much appreciate them, and would be remiss if I didn't share that out loud in front of everybody. But I'm very fortunate. So, we have tried to work with HR and to even really rethink our whole process and what we do. Last, I guess about three years ago, we spent some time and talked about our mission, and we came up with four words that we really felt defined what HR is all about. Attract, serve, develop, and retain. And so, we really think about, as we start to do everything to get quality employees to maximize student success, we think about those four terms and how they fit our different processes. So, this is our new mission statement. And back in 2016, it was really the summer of 2016, y'all may remember, we had 13 administrative vacancies, five principals, Dr. Little talks about that all the time, and eight assistant principal vacancies. And we were in the summer, and we're trying to fill these leadership holes. And so, we really were lacking a process that made the best candidates for the school readily available. And when I say that, what I mean is, like, we were scrambling to get interview teams together. We'd bring some, a group of people in, interview them, probably spend maybe 30 minutes with each candidate, and then we would make a decision after those 30 minutes or 45 minutes, who was going to be the administrator that we were hiring, probably one of the most critical positions in the school, and we spent, we devoted that much time to it. The other problem with our process was that we would have really good candidates come in here, so if we interviewed, say, eight people, only one person actually gets the job. So, whoever was ranked two, three, or four didn't know they were ranked two, three, or four, they just knew they didn't get the job. And so, then we turned right around, and we start interview team number two. And they may or may not apply for the second one because they didn't get the first one, but after they've done that twice, and you've got really top candidates each time, at some point, people get frustrated, disillusioned, they don't think you want them, and it may not be that we didn't want them, it was just that we didn't have, you know, they weren't the right fit for that particular situation. And so, we started looking at what we were doing with our Aspiring Principals Academy and the processes that we were using at that same time to identify candidates in a pool for potential principalship, and the work that the aspiring principal academy was doing with those candidates throughout that year, getting them prepared for that administrative position. And we thought, is there something that we could do that would be similar with the assistant principals? So, we called them aspiring assistant principals. See how innovative and clever we were? We came up with all our own. And really, the focus here was growing our own internal leaders and hiring from within the district as much as possible, because our thought was, you know what, we've got just as good a people in Lexington One as they've got in Richland Two, or Richland One, or whoever was applying. But for whatever reason, because our people might be, get disillusioned, because they tried a couple of times and didn't get it, we might not have been effective sharing that, we decided that we would change our process for interviewing administrative positions and develop what we call an assistant principal pool. So, what does applying for assistant principal in Lexington One look like? Well, it's a multi-step performance-based process. The first step, phase one, is the applicant submits an application and a letter of interest. And then typically, Devana and I look through those, and we kind of score them based on, are they going to be certified? If the pool is for next year, then they need to be certified as an administrator before the end of the summer. And so, if they aren't, then we pull them out, and then we read their letter of interest. And that's pretty telling, if, you know, if they can't write with correct grammar, then we figure that might be a sign we probably don't want them in our pool. But for the most part, we get a lot of candidates through phase one, and we move them into phase two, and that's where the weeding really starts. In phase two, we send them an essay, and we ask them to, we send them a prompt, a writing prompt via email, and we ask them to write about a project that led or, write about a project that they led or coordinated where conflicting viewpoints were present. And then we ask them to present evidence of how they moved that work forward. And then we score those essays, and now we score it with two readers, and then from the scores of those essays and where their resume landed, then that moves them to phase three. Phase three is the face-to-face interview. We bring them in, we do onsite interviews with two different interview teams. They have an on-demand writing, because you think about the letter of interest, they might have had help with that, and we want to make sure that they can write on-demand. So, we give them an on-demand writing prompt. We have them watch an observation where a teacher is doing a lesson, and they critique that lesson, they give feedback to that teacher. And so, when they come into the interview, we role-play. One of us will be the teacher, and they'll give us feedback as if they were the administrator doing that observation. And then we do, we give them data to analyze. It's data just from a school, just a general school, but we don't identify that, and then they just analyze the data and tell us what they gleaned from that data. And then, after that process is done, we rank all the candidates as they go through there, and that's where we make our selection for our pool. And typically, we try to get, the first year, we had 24, and I'll show this with you in a minute, but we try to do about 10 to 12 per year moving forward. We learned 24 is a lot, but 10 to 12 probably is, and this past year, we did 10, and we add them to the pool. But the final phase is, once they've been accepted into the pool, then we send a DISC personality test to them, and we ask them just to complete that. And the reason there is now what we're telling at least these 10 candidates, you are quality candidate, we would like you as a part of our assistant principal pool, we want you to be an assistant principal in Lexington One, but the last piece is finding the right person for the right team. And so, we have them complete this personality test, and then that way... And then that way, when we give our, the pool results to the assist, our principal looking for an assistant principal, they can kind of look at what that personality is based on that DISC survey and see who, which candidates work best for the team that they're trying to fill the hole for. And I have to laugh, I'll give you a side story. My son sells medical supplies and they go through like nine rounds of interviews before they get the job. And so he was on like round nine and he called me and he said, Dad, how would you answer this question? And it was a personality test. And I'm like, Christopher, I don't think you can fake this one. I think you got to tell them who you are because now you're at a point where they've decided they really like you, they want you. But they're looking at the candidates to see who is the best fit for the team. So that's where phase four comes. So in 2016, 17, we ran this process and it really was for looking for 2017, 18 vacancies. We had 160 applicants through the resume and letter of interest. From that 160, we dropped it to 127. And literally that was, people couldn't write. I mean, it was, it was amazing. Or they were applying for the assistant principalship and they weren't ready, already certified or would be ready to be certified by the time this, this school year started. So then that was phase two. We dropped that to phase three, which was 38. So we brought 38 and interviewed them. That first year, what we did was, um, we had a very small group of people helping us. And so those interviews were, everybody had one interview. Everybody had their essay read by one person. And, um, we ranked them and got the top 23. That's how many we put into the pool. We had six assistant principal vacancies. We hired five that came from the pool of the six. The sixth vacancy came from outside because when we advertise a position, um, we don't want to limit ourselves to just that pool. For one reason, um, if you're an assistant principal in a neighboring district, you may not want to apply to the pool. Because we call and get references from that district. And you may not want your current person to know you're fishing to go to another district. So they may not feel inclined to apply to the pool. Because we do the pool now, we start in November. And so they may not want to let people know in November in their current job that they're looking for a job for the next year. So when we advertise, we advertise to everyone. And in this particular year, that sixth vacancy was filled by someone that was a sitting assistant principal in a neighboring district. And the way we got that person was one of our schools was interviewing for assistant principals, picked somebody from the pool but called us and told us, man, we got this minority candidate that's pretty sharp, y'all might want to talk to him. Devana and I called him, we took him through this same process, the interview process. So he was treated just like everybody else. And so technically, we put him in the pool. And then the next week, one of our schools interviewed him as a part of their applicant pool and they hired him. So we say he wasn't in the pool, but kind of he was in the pool. But we found him because we advertised outside the district. So we had, um, at the end of that year, one moved out of district. And then we had 17 people remaining in the pool. Now, once you get in the pool, that's not the end. Devana has done a really good job and Mary has stepped up to help us with this as we talk about leadership development. But we do, we offer four sessions during the school year. So that, those people that were in the pool in six, uh, 16, 17, end of the year for 17, 18 vacancies, if they didn't get a position throughout 17, 18, we had four sessions. And these were some of the topics that were covered in those four sessions. And the way we landed on those topics was really what we saw as weaknesses when we were interviewing candidates for the pool. So when we were interviewing candidates and we had them do that teacher observation, one of the things we recognized in that first cohort is they really struggled with given feedback. So we had a, some coaching opportunities so that they would learn how to be better at giving feedback. The other things that we, oh, and the other thing I wanted to say, I skipped, I should have looked my notes. One of our goals, remember, was to give our internal candidates more of an opportunity. And if you look back at this group, of this group, the hires, 83% were internal. 83% came from Lexington One. So this, what we learned here was we needed more people involved in the process. There wasn't a lot of, I mean, there was some trust, but there was probably a little distrust from our principals because now we're taking on something that they had done by themselves before. So HR, you know, the central services is now controlling who's going to, we get to hire as assistant principals. And so what we figured is we needed to involve them early on. We thought we were helping them out by not involving them because we were trying to save time for them. But we recognized that was a mistake. So we involved, we sent an all-call out that next fall and told them what we were doing. We also learned that you can't wait till March to do this. So this next year, we started in November. And we had, I don't know, tw- um, probably 20 principals that volunteered to help us with this process. So they helped us read essays and score them. And then they helped us in the interview process. We had a lot more interview teams. So that even, even enhanced our scoring aspect because we had two readers read every essay. So if, if two people are reading the essay, independent of each other with no name on them, and the scores are far apart, then a third person would read it to try to get a better score for the essay. Because we want to make sure that we weren't having some kind of internal biases. And then we had two teams interview each candidate. So, you know, sometimes when you're interviewing someone, you know, they come in and, you, you know, you like their look or something, you might make some decisions without even being aware of it. And so we wanted to make sure that we were hearing it and then another group was hearing it so that those scores on the interview process would align too. So that, and then the last thing we did was we took the reference letter. The first year, we asked principals to write a reference letter. And so we found out that most of the reference letters were really good letters. So we needed to kind of hone in on that a little bit and maybe try to have a little bit of discrepancy between candidates. And so we worked with, um, the, um, reference piece to make it a questionnaire. And we have them now score them one to five in each of these different areas. And, and if they're, and this past year, what we've done is even taken, we didn't count, well, like before we do, like, I guess the first, second year was one to three. And we realized a lot of times, everybody just gives them all threes. So this past year, we did it one to five. And fours and fives count the same. Two, um, threes count, and then ones and twos, they get the same score. Because some people, when I score somebody, I might not give everybody a five, but I give them a four and it means the same thing. So we talked with some experts in this field and they told us that might be some way to go. So that's how we changed it. So then, so the 17, 18 process again was for this current year's vacancies. We had 113 apply. Now see the writing, the reference parts getting better. 101 to phase two, 39 interviewed, and we brought 11 into the, um, pool. We had 10 assistant principal vacancies, we hired six from the pool. The remaining four, two were external candidates. And both of those had sitting assistant principal or administrative experience. So they came from out of district, but they were already assistant principals. One was, I think, a coordinator at the district level. And then we had two internal candidates that didn't apply for the pool. But when their position opened at their school, they were interested in it and ended up, we, but we took, brought, brought all four of those candidates back through the gamut, did the same interview process with them and, and vetted them in the sense that that, had they gone through the pool, they would have made the pool. All right. And so then from our pool now at 28, six have moved out of district and we had 16 remaining. So we just finished, um, oh, and what we did with cohort two, again, we had the four sessions. 80% of the candidates that we hired from cohort two were internal. And we did these sessions, they changed a little bit, again, based on the information that we gleaned from the interviews with the candidates. And then the 4.0 rubric and all that actionable feedback related to what's going on with the state, with their instruction. We had a session four is their elevator speech. Um, I would tell you, this is pretty interesting too. They have the, um, if you're in, um, pool one, cohort one, at the end of cohort one, that session four, remember you were identified the year before. You're in this pool, you do four sessions. One of the charges to each of the candidates is that you've got to do some intentionality to what you do to be a better leader. So that you need to go to your principal and say, I need to have more leadership opportunities. And they will work, we let the principals know they're in the pool. So when they're looking for somebody to lead a committee, they got somebody they can tap because this person needs to help build their leadership talent, their leadership skills. And so at the end in session four, their elevator speech is really their interview to stay in the pool for the next year. They stand up and they tell each other what they did this year to become a better leader.
I think, uh, Dr. Little shared some of the actual elevator speeches with us last year, right?
Oh, that was, that may have been APA.
That was what now?
That was, may have been the Aspiring Principals Academy. But the same idea, that's where they came up with the idea.
Get up and talk.
But again, so, and, and the elevator speech literally worked for one candidate from pool one because Devana and I heard her do her speech at session four. We had a, a school that was looking to hire someone. They wanted to hire some from outside, so we interviewed that person from another district. And we were kind of, you know, we've really got better candidates in the pool. And so we shared the elevator speech with that principal and said, you might want to talk to this person. And she ended up hiring him. So, um, it has worked well for them. What we learned from this cohort is that we needed more structured way to give feedback to candidates. So what happened was when we did the interviews and we had the two people that did the interviews, we didn't as an interview team necessarily do a really good job of capturing what we thought about those candidates. And then what we learned after cohort two was they were calling us wanting to know, well, what can I do to get better? And we didn't have a really good feedback to give them. So this past year, we, we emphasized that. And we spent a lot of time at the end of each interview, writing down specifics about what this particular person could do to get better. So we have better feedback. We're going to, we learned to be more specific on the rubrics for on-demand writing. And then again, we talked about the weighting of the various components of the interview. Thinking about is all four parts of that interview weight the same or is something more important than another? So we move on now to the 28, 19 process. This is the one we just completed. 101 applied, 95 went to phase two, 27 to phase three, and then 10 we added to the pool. Right. So that means right now our pool is 26 candidates. We have five assistant principals vacancies at the moment and that, that's counting because they, as we hire a principal, that might come from their assistant principal. So that's going to open it up another one. What we've learned is we need to revamp the data. We need to change the prompts and questions because we want to keep that process fresh. You can use them for about two years, but then after that, you got to change it up a little bit or people will get used to it. I will tell you this, this has been a really, really great experience. Um, in this particular pool, the candidate that scored the highest, when we ranked to get those 10 to go into phase four, applied the first year, applied the second year. And when we interviewed her, I actually got to be a part of one of her interview teams. I was blown away by how much she had grown as a leader. The things she talked about that she had done this past year at her school, it just blew me away. I'm like, this is what this is all about. Now, um, we've changed, um, interview process for principals. So we kind of use some of this information to help us inform what we do now for principals. And so for principals, there, there's some phases they go through as well. We know that for a principalship, we typically advertise nationally. We would like to have, um, candidates from across this country that want to come to South Carolina and Lexington One. But it's not probably, um, likely that those candidates would be able to fly here for a initial interview, fly home, we make a decision for round two, they fly back for that. And then we take them for round three. It's just not, logistically, it doesn't make sense. So what we've done is we've added a phone interview component. And so the behavior-based ti- kinds of questions, things that revolve around ambiguity, continuous improvement, UC and decision-making, we ask those types of questions in the phone interviews. If we have internal candidates that are not in the APA, the Aspiring Principals Academy, those candidates we really know as leaders. But if we just have someone else outside that apply for a principalship, even within our district, we do a phone interview with them as well because we want to keep the playing field level. Once the phone interviews, we decide then who we're going to interview face-to-face. In the meantime, Dr. Little has gone out to the school, if we have a principal vacancy. He's gone out to the school. He talks to the support staff, the certified staff, the administrators that are there, and parents, four different groups, and gets information from them. One, he asks three questions basically. What is it you love about your school? If you had the magic one, what would you change? And then three, based on one and two, what kind of leader are you looking for? We sit, um, Mary Beth, um, the level director, myself, Gloria, we sit there and we just type. Though we get all that captured in bullets. So then we have that data. We give the group that we bring in for the in-house interview, we send them the data of the school. This is not fake data, this is real data for that particular school. And then we ask in the interview for them to respond to that data. They have an on-demand, on-demand writing prompt. We do the role play, we do the observation, and then we just have general questions and answers. From that interview team, group, then we pick the finalists. Sometimes there's one person, sometimes there's two people. In this most recent, there were three that kind of stood out. We asked those three people to come back and present their entry plan to Dr. Little and SLT. And that entry plan is their first 90 days. Um, and they've got, they get the information from the focus groups of the school. So we send them that data so they can see what they're looking for. And then we send the data, they already have the data for the school. And so they talk to us about what their 90, their first 90 days will look like. And from that interview, that's where we select the candidate to move forward. Future impact on all hiring practices goes beyond just principals, assistant principals. We're working right now with a group to develop an interview guide that we can give to principals that talks about integrity and fidelity of the hiring process. Really has us look at our own internal biases. Our thinking is that Devana and I will probably end up having to do like a workshop at some point during the year through the, with the, on the interview guide once it's finished. And then we will commu- communicate our, our practices and procedures through this workshop. And really, one of the big pieces is the intentionality for the interview team. I really think there's a lot of power, and I mean, this is probably a no-brainer, but I don't know that we've ever done this to, I mean, we do it now with the assistant principals and principals. Is really talk about what are you looking for? You know, and talk with your interview team. I remember, we used to come in here and we'd sit in the boardroom, you get selected for an interview team. And you walked in, they handed you a list of questions. And you sat there and you said, well, I'll ask one, I'll ask two. We asked the questions, but we were all on that team probably looking for something different. I mean, you know, I'm looking for somebody like me, Jeff's looking for somebody like him. Um, Devana's looking for somebody like her. But we really didn't talk about what are we looking for, for this particular position. So I think there's a, a lot of power in talking through these procedures and practices and talking about what is it you're looking for before you ever get started. And in the AP process, we actually bring all those interview teams in and we talk through that rubric and say, this question, what kind of answers would I want to hear? And so everybody knows kind of what they're looking for before they score. So I'm really excited about this. I think this part right here is going to be huge. I do think it's crazy, but there's a lot of internal biases that we all have. And we've got to address those and, and, um, the group has got some really good stuff that we can use to help make that happen. Any questions?
I guess I'm impressed. I would thank you because again, it's a tough hiring market. And I always joke, you know, with our internal candidates, we know their warts, but external candidates look shiny and so we discover their warts as we hire them. And so it, there's pros and cons of both of that. The only feedback I'd give you is as, it sounds like this pool is going to be bigger than the number of spots, which is a good thing for the district. But leadership is often harder than what most people think as they move out of direct classroom into, you know, managing professionals other than children. So I love hearing that they have to do some work on their home campuses. But for example, that we have this teacher leadership council and they're coming together with projects. And they are incredibly smart, highly motivated people. So asking this pool to maybe help with things bigger than their school may give them space to succeed and demonstrate leadership as well as give them space to realize, I'm just a really good teacher and this is too hard and, and I just want to go back to teaching, which, which we're okay with. You know, we'd rather discover that before we hire them in their assistant principal for two years and we're starting over, so.
So, um, I didn't want to steal Mary Gaskin's thunder because I think next board meeting, she's going to present the whole leadership continuum. And I think you're going to, she's going to answer a lot of those questions because she's done a great work with trying to develop teacher leaders. Because there is the, I mean, what Kimberly works with right now, there are teachers that are really good classroom teachers and don't want to give that up. But they like to have the opportunity to present their leadership. And so we've got a whole continuum, teachers, um, even, we've talked about even adding support staff at some point to that continuum. But we're working through it. But I think Mary's going to present that, if not the next meeting in the very near future. So you'll see that. But yeah, thank you so much. That is so true. You know, I'll, I'll, the, the work, I mean, we've had, well, it's funny, you say, we had a person that's in- that's in the pool, he's been in the pool since year one, and he sent an email to Sydney, the girl that helps us with keeping up with all the stuff, that he didn't think he was going to apply for any assistant principalships this year, just because, and he was talking about what he was doing at his school. And so it may be that he's decided, you know, this, I really don't want to do this. I'm happy doing this, because I've been given opportunity to lead in a different way. All right.
Questions or comments, Board?
I'm just going to back up. This is somewhat related. Cindy and I had the opportunity this morning to attend John Maxwell at River Bluff for about an hour, which was lovely. He's super, if you haven't read any of his books or heard him speak, it was awesome. But he made a comment that I actually wrote down, that, because it made me think about our teacher leaders. And I follow so many of our teachers on Twitter, and I just see the amazing things that are going on. And, you know, we tend to equate old-school that leadership is management. And it's not. Leadership is leadership. And so I was just going to share with you the quote that he said, which I thought was really excellent, and really does describe so many of our teachers. He said, "Leaders never cross the finish line alone. They slow their pace to bring others along with them across the finish line." And I think that that's exactly what we see our teachers doing all the time, and what these programs that y'all are developing, you're cultivating these leaders that are really aware of the students and the other, their colleagues. And sometimes even the managers in the building maybe not, don't have the leadership skills that some of our teachers have. And so I really applaud the efforts y'all are making to kind of align our hiring and recruiting processes with really identifying the true leaders. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, these ladies over here have a lot to do with exactly what we're doing. And Mary Gaskin's, I have to give her some credit, too, because she, she's phenomenal as well. I wish she was in my department. I've been trying to steal her, but nobody else.
That's not going to happen. All right, so.
Wait, before you go, Board, let's give that group a round of applause, because that's some good work.
That is all that's on my superintendent's report today. Again, thank you for your patience and being here tonight. But I wanted to make sure those were three timely topics with the hiring season, with the budget season, and of course, with Thursday night with the Pete's and the policy. Looking forward to having as many of you there as possible, and just tickled to death to see our, see the growth that we have. And one of the things I want to point out about that last process, note that every year, they learned something new about it. And they said, ah, let's go ahead and tweak, let's go ahead and change, that it's not a, we're done, and then we're ready to move on. It's, or we're going to keep repeating the same thing every year. The teacher leadership stuff, we learned some stuff the first year, made some tweaks, you see what's happening the second year. And so I think that's a, that's a state that we always want to be in, we always want to be in, with the idea that this is an iteration. It's a draft, and we're, and we're open to improvement, to be more effective and efficient, and to, and to be open to the lessons learned about how we get better for the future. So you see, all three of those ideas are really tied to that. And so we're excited about that as well. So that's all I have.
Well, if I may take a point of privilege, I was just wondering if you could give us an update. Did we get any damage from the tornadoes Sunday night, any of our buildings? I just would like to, for the whole board, to hear a report on that real quickly. I know it's not on the agenda, but that was, happened since the agenda was posted.
We were very fortunate that we did not receive any significant damage to any of our facilities. We did lose power, a couple of our facilities on Sunday evening, but we worked with the power companies to get that restored. They're super working with us, they always focus on our schools. So if you live near a school, you're, you get the benefit of that when you get power coming back on. But we did have some debris down in some of our driveways and things like that, but nothing major that we had to work with.
Well, I watched that tornado, it was, went by, right by Dr. Little's house, and then it skirted over by Deerfield and over by Carolina Springs and White Knoll. And I was like, oh, my goodness, I hope there's, those schools are okay. And if I may, I want to take one more point of privilege. The Board last week was invited to the Excellence in Education Dinner. There were 1,000 people in attendance, and Pelear High was the host school. And they had the most wonderful speaker, Dr. Brown from Wingate University. And I just cannot say enough, that is a dinner that honors the kids who are in the top 10% of each high school in their graduating class. What a phenomenal group of kids. It was just a wonderful night. Probably one of my favorite events. So thank you all, and I just wanted to share, if you get a chance and you're invited, make sure you go. And also, the fried chicken was delicious. Board, item 10, I might have had two desserts, I don't know. Item 10.0, or items for your board information only, and 11.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Anderson, do I have a second? Ms. Green, all in favor, stand up, and I believe it's unanimous. Oh, thanks.